What audit you waiting on?
Yeah, but.
Oh.
Yeah, but see if we don't mention.
I got the flag. I'd like to call this meeting in order if you'd help me with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you call the roll, please.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Here.
Mark Hickman?
Here.
Brian Williams? St. Jeffrey?
Here.
Jennifer Massey?
Here.
And we do have a quorum. Thanks everybody for coming. First, our order of business is minutes of April twenty-six, twenty-two.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes from April forty-six, twenty-two.
Second. Now, we have a motion, the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next is financial, it's April twenty-two. Entertain a motion.
I motion that we approve the financial.
Do have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the financial? If not, we'll call the roll.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
St. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Next order of business in general, we have resolution twenty-two dash oh-six. If you'd read that.
We'll read it and then there are some, some points to discuss about it.
Okay.
It's be resolution twenty-two oh-six, resolution authorizing purchase of a Nissan truck for animal control use. That's the resolution. We all met last month, we sort of took, took a vote, it's sixteen thousand dollars will be allocated for this. Chief Hunter's here and found one that was for, no, no, twenty-two thousand was allocated and he found one for sixteen thousand. So, so saved, saved six thousand on that. Then we drafted it. One thing that's not included in here is the cost of wrapping it for, with our logo. And he said that's gonna cost about four hundred, five hundred, they don't, getting an estimate on that.
Less than four hundred dollars.
A little less than, okay, so.
There, there was a couple of maintenance issues we did with this truck when we got it, but because of the cost saving element, it was worth the purchase. To go ahead and do these two minor things.
So do we need to revise this? Are we okay with letting the mayor do those expenditures of the four hundred bucks?
I, I think the second, I don't think we need to revise it. I mean, that, that would be a necessary and related, just, just an accessory fee for it.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure y'all knew that.
Any further discussion?
It's a full-size truck and the box will fit it and everything?
The box is in it, it's a Ford or, it's a full-size Nissan, it's a smaller truck.
Okay.
But it serves her needs very well.
Okay, good.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call the roll, please.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
St. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Next, we have resolution twenty-two dash seven.
Okay, this'll be resolution twenty-two dash oh-seven, resolution amending the city and rescue grant budgets for the purpose of claiming police salaries and employer payroll contributions.
Just a, just a little bit.
I was ready to do this. I'd, I'd like to make a motion, we table this and, and plan a workshop over this to kinda go with the details. Too early, recommend that?
Would you like me to point something really quick on it?
We're basically doing what we did with the first CARES Act money. I'm gonna read a paragraph that came to us from municipal league and hopefully it might shed some light. Treasury has now confirmed in writing that it is indeed permissible to claim provisions for police and fire expenses as expenses for the ARPA grant. Most cities and towns in Arkansas claimed the same type of expense for the CARES Act funding in twenty-twenty. We now encourage everyone to consider using this route to claim expenses primarily because of the lower likelihood of audit findings and the administrative ease it offers in incurring expenses. If we, if we do this like they're recommending, that will mean that we have, once we get the second half of the money, we have already spent that money for police and fire salaries. That means the month, the actual money will go into the general fund and it can be used any way y'all decide. We won't have to then make sure that it's usable from the, you know, under the treasury guidelines. Because we've already got the money, we've already spent it using this meth, method.
Spent towards the.
I know, it's complicated.
I totally get the idea, but it's encumbered money now, based on the rules from the treasury.
Exactly.
And what we're doing by shifting those funds are unencumbering the funds.
That's correct.
Making them to where we can spend.
Right.
But I'll second Mark's motion to table.
It is complicated.
For the simple reason, we don't even have the other set of funds yet. It almost feels like jumping the gun to shift that money that's not even in our bank account.
Right, and we're not gonna do that. I mean, one, we're, we're earning interest on it and, and two, we have until actually twenty-twenty-six to report that we've spent this money. So, I, you know, what, whatever y'all are more comfortable with and I'll be glad to go over it further.
So, you, uh, what, is that a motion or not?
I wanna know your thoughts on it.
My thoughts, I believe I'd table it.
Cause I think what's tripping me up is the wording, cause you said police and fire, which I get that. This is police salaries and employer payroll contributions. So that's what's tripping me up. It seems like it's going just to pay city employees instead of.
That's payroll taxes and things like that, that we pay during our payroll processing of emergency services here. I mean.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's money that's already spent. We're usually gonna get that back.
Yes, we're using from March.
We need to have a plan.
Yeah.
For that and et cetera, et cetera. Listen, the legal counsel at Metro Plan knows far better than I do, but I'm confused by some of what I've read in the final rule as far as what we're doing.
Exactly.
So I would rather discuss it at length in a workshop or, or table it for another.
Do we wanna table it and have a workshop?
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Is that okay?
Sign with me. I don't like the motion.
I'm, I'm gonna reinstate that.
I would like a workshop, that would, I mean, to me, we could just learn, cause the sma, you know, the smarter we are about it, the, the more we can, you know, benefit everybody, so.
We do have a motion on the floor then, and do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Let's, let's call a roll on this one, that'll be in the minutes. That way it'll be easy.
Will Elder?
I'm staying.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
St. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
All for the workshop?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let's talk about that when, when it, when everybody can do it.
When can we do that? We need a date.
Twenty-fourty-six.
Sounds good to me.
No, kidding.
And is that a motion?
How was the year?
I'm just, again, one of my major hangups is we don't even, those other funds are expected in July, correct?
Correct, correct.
So you need to.
I, I would almost push it out past that date.
August.
But, yeah, but no matter what comes in July, we've already received our money and already spent it.
Wouldn't that be a good idea, August would be a good.
But the four hundred ninety-two, whatever thousand, we won't have all of that chunk until after July.
July, correct.
Well, August would be the better.
I believe.
Am I suggestion?
You have your council meeting on the thirtieth? No, excuse me, that's not right. Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Do you want it the same day and just do it early or?
I think, I agree with it.
Do it at five o'clock? Is, can everybody do that?
August twenty-third, council meeting.
Twenty-third, yeah. That's probably a good idea.
August twenty-third.
August twenty-third.
At, at five o'clock.
Okay, then that one is true. And we will have a workshop on it.
Barbara, would you send out an email when it comes close to that time?
Probably, we might have someone from Metro.
We get a reminder at the June Angel High meetings.
Uh, next, we have resolution twenty-two dash eight. And Jimmy Joe's up on this one.
Jimmy Joe.
Hey, Jimmy, you wanna come up here and say?
Oh, he wants this fancy excavator.
Okay.
We'll read the.
We'll read, is it resolution twenty-two dash oh-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Mayflower to purchase one LPX DT vacuum excavator for the Mayflower Water Department.
That ain't me, buddy. Seem like I've heard this before, buddy.
Let me get my camera in the back.
It's Raymond.
He come out with that, I said, yeah, he don't know why he did it.
Tell us what this thing is, Raymond.
Sir?
Tell us what this is.
It's a vacuum excavator. It runs off a vacuum to activate around utilities where there's a lot of utilities where, where we can't use our track hole. We can excavate it around that, you get water, it's high pressure, three thousand PSI, and there's a, a vacuum line on it. You need to stick it in there and you can back around other utilities, you need to replace valves or just possibly a meter box then taking a, a big machine out. You know, all you'd have to have is this small dump truck, a little material on there to put it back in that hole that you excavate out. I think it'd be a beneficial tool for us, especially during this point in time, I wish we already had it, with all of the infrastructure being put in by the high-speed internet. It would probably save us a lot of time and effort out there of getting striped or, or damaged. I, I, what I call it, they call it a strike, our utilities and other utilities, so. I had it in the budget for twenty, uh, twenty-one. I decided not to purchase that equipment because of, due to the fact we had a lot of expense with RDOT at that point in time. Revenue was not coming back in as quickly as we've been spending it. RDOT was a little, so about reimbursement. So I held off on purchasing that equipment for that time period, but now, of course, the cost has increased.
Thirteen thousand.
Which is kinda disappointing. I, the machine I had looked at was kind of a little bit oversized, too much of a machine for us. I done some research, I was looking for a machine that had a five-hundred-gallon spoil tank with a three-hundred-gallon freshwater, but I wanted one with a thousand CFM. Most of them had five-hundred CFMs, which you can trench down to about three foot, three and a half foot is all they'd want to do. But we needed something a little bit larger, so in some areas we had to trench down deeper, you know, so I think it'll save us some time. Hopefully, in the future, do another low case, cause the majority of our system does not have any trace water. You know, we're out there with whistling rods. Have you ever tried to whist something up with a whistling rod? And you take your, on the wireline and, and you look up and it's a power line, or you look down and it's a phone line? Well, you go a little bit further and you might whist up a gas line. You don't know if you got a gas line, water line, or what you got, you know? So with this particular machine, you can cut a small little trench with it, find your u- utility, mark it, you'll be right on it, you know? Go every hundred feet and, and mark it, so I think it'd be a big beneficial for us. The only thing, reason I brought it back to you because the cost price, it had an estimate cost of forty-eight thousand at, in, lasted twenty-twenty, you know? So I, I got another quote, which was sixty-one, a little over sixty-one thousand. I was hoping to have another quote today, but they gave me a quote, but they went for a thousand CFM. So I had to ask them about that and they're in the design process with that size of motor, a coal or gas motor, thirty-seven horsepower. I was surprised that they, they didn't already have one in the works already. Vermeer is, is a top leader in this industry, in this area, in the state of Arkansas, matter of fact. Of course, they, they have one that we had been looking for, you know, so.
So here in the ordinance, so the forty-eight thousand was in the capital outlay of the twenty-twenty-two budget?
So it had to be.
Essentially, what we're having to use increase that by the thirteen thousand two hundred five dollars?
Yes.
So, um.
I mean, y'all have the budget for it, right?
Yeah.
We had, we had it in the budget for.
Yeah, we had it in the budget, but it didn't have it in the budget for this amount, so that's why I amended a resolution to y'all to show that increase on that budget.
We're having in the water and sewer.
Yeah.
To increase that.
And then also help us in the wastewater site, too, not just only.
Sure. I think it's a good investment. I make a motion.
Me, too, especially if it cuts down.
You had quite a bit of problems with, uh, trying to keep out all this stuff with the, going all in the very small space anyway, haven't you?
Uh, yeah, yeah. It, you know, those small spaces, when you get in a lot of utilities, it's hand digging. Well, you may be there for an hour or two hand digging it, you know, for this machine right here, it's probably doing about thirty, forty-five minutes or less, you know? It just, you don't have to worry about damaging the utility with a shovel or anything like that.
Yeah, I could say it that way.
And it'll help y'all work faster, too, right? Will it help y'all work faster?
Oh, we hope so.
Okay.
Yeah. Once we get really familiar with the machine, there's some training with it.
There'll be some learning.
You know, get everybody familiar with it and the operations of it. The biggest thing is making sure you keep the spoil tank clean.
I believe we have a motion on the floor, but if you'd reinstate that motion, please.
Second. Go ahead.
Motion that we accept resolution twenty-two dash zero-eight.
A second.
And we do have a motion and a second. Barbara, if you don't mind, reinstate the number on that, if you would.
Okay, the amount of the purchase price is sixty-one thousand two hundred and five dollars, and this resolution says not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so that is the motion and the second, we'll call the roll, please.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
St. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
All right, we went through all of that. We do have the twenty-twenty-one legislative audit and Barbara, if you would just read, you don't have to read the whole thing, but if you'd read the main line for me, if you would.
Okay, I think the main gist of the, the audit was that there was no findings.
Yeah, I got a copy of that, that was the bottom line.
Just wanted to make sure, and that is part we have to do. We have to tell everybody what it is and no findings at all for Mayflower, so I was proud of it. Next thing, comments and stuff, Will, you'll be proud of the other thing, it's five point six seven percent.
I've already discussed that with you.
And that's on the loss and that's very good. Raymond, I'm proud of you doing that. We did have a meeting, RDOT, they are eighty percent done with the overpass itself. They are seven percent done with the railroad part, so there's two bridges. And it looks like completion date, their target is April twenty-three, so that's what the meeting was about and I wanna make sure y'all knew.
Okay.
Um, regular meetings on city council, we got Tuesday, June the twenty-eighth. Planning commission is June the fourteenth, but I want to, is there any comments with the city council for anything?
I, I'm delighted with the report on the, uh, uh, street, the grass cutting and trash picking up. It looks like somebody's really doing a good job.
Need to comment Doug on that one. He, he's staying on top of that thing. The other thing that I wanna tell everybody, the seven streets are being done right now that we got the grant for from RDOT. There's some people out there that it's confusing of who made that decision. It's RDOT. So, um, they're, they're the ones that picked, they came out and looked at all the streets and they, they are the one, not me. They are the ones that, uh, uh, got the streets and it looks real, real good. They got a good company doing this thing, so. Anything else with the city council? Anything with the public?
I wanna second that about the code enforcement. Chief, great job, we appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah.
And if there's not any other comments?
I, I was thinking about Zach, if you wanna talk about this.
Yeah, it was in our packets, he was talking about the, uh, the Act six oh-five, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
It was in our packets, uh, which wasn't on the agenda for tonight, but just some questions about this, um, and reading through it this week, and I spoke to Dustin. I'm, I think we need to set a workshop date for this as well.
Okay.
I guess I need to make a motion, set a workshop date for this.
Now, everybody's got that, the bill, right? It got in your packet. You need to read over it, it's a very complicated kind of thing, but it might work.
Well, and with the, the questions at hand, uh, the training that's gotta be done by an advisory committee and, and by the voting committee and all of that. I don't even know if that training's available yet.
It, it looks scarier than what it is. I'll do a thirty-second teaser about it, but I, I'm comfortable if we did that workshop the same as when we have that, that August. I think it can wait that long.
Yeah.
It, 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 this, all, to sum it up, requires us to do three things. The first one, we're already doing, it, it, it is a, we have to do a, a cost of, a water cost study. Raymond has that well underway and, and our deadline is not until two thousand twenty-six, so we're four years ahead of schedule on that, so that's, take away one good thing about that. The second thing we need to do is, is set up a water advisory board, which, which is just, is the, the group of you, but then you have to bring in two other people from the unincorporated areas because you sell water to the unincorporated areas.
Cause it's a district.
More than twenty percent.
And they're, and they're non-voting, so it's just, we just need two, two other volunteers to join you for, say, one meeting, two meetings a year. There's not really a structure on how to do that, so that's easy. The, the third component is that we, you do have to have a training session, is an eight-hour school, uh, that would have to be completed by the end of the year, except for Will Elder. You have ten, ten years, is that right? They told me you've been on for ten years.
Pardon?
So, yes, if you're, if you've been on the council for more than ten years, you're exempt from the training, so you're, you're. But everybody else, then if you, if you intend to, to, to still be on the council, uh, that you would have to have an annual training of, of eight hours. And it's due by, by the end of the year. But the thing about that is the training doesn't exist yet. If, this is such a new act that the curric, there's, the commite, committees are still even setting up the schools, so there's nothing to even talk about. We, like, there'll, there'll be a, a time and a place and there'll be several different options. It might be a Zoom meeting, it might be go to Little Rock, it might be something. But they're still even getting that off the ground.
So, so would you just set that for six PM on the same day that August?
I'm, I'm, I can give the same, I, we can dive deeper into, into what that is, but it could be just as fine in, in August, that's fine.
And that would be my suggestion.
My, the workshop I'd recommended for that money, I'd be kinda reading through it all. And I'm kinda, in my opinion, kinda go hand in hand on a lot of that information and the monies and things like that, so that's, that's what I was referring to as far as the workshop and all that stuff.
So what is, what, what was the purpose of this act? Is it helping us financially?
Well, I mean, that, it's, it's an act, it's, it was passed last year.
Okay.
It's, it's just a new law in Arkansas that, that we, that we have to follow. It's not, uh.
Okay, so it doesn't help us financially, it's just a lot more hoops we gotta jump through.
It's just, it's more headache really for us, yeah. It's just a, um, legislature just gifted us an act there that we have to do. But, you know, and one thing is it requires is that, is the cost study, and the cost study is just to, to make sure that we're in line with what they do in, in Northwest and the Delta and everything else. It's just to, to do a cost study. We, we have that underway.
So we could do the workshop on the same day?
Yeah, that would just be a workshop to talk more about, about this, and we'll know more by then. We'll, we'll probably have dates and, dates and places for, for the school that everyone will need to go to.
Is that okay with everybody? We'll just have that the same day?
So August twenty-third?
Yeah. That sounds good.
But, uh, yeah, but, yeah, you can read, you can, there's, there's two or three different components of it. This is the, the official version and then there's a PowerPoint, but, but we'll, we'll go over all that in August, but it's not. Nothing to be alarmed about.
Anything else with the public? Anything with the city council, except I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I do, I will tell them, that you're, for, for, for running again, your pack, if you haven't done already, your packets are available at the, go to see the, the Margaret Darter's office at the county clerk. And you can get your reelection packets, uh, eligibility forms and everything, sign up. You'll have to have your ten names for your petition and you, and the, August third through tenth is when you turn that in. And the tenth, it, it expires at noon, so don't.
That's when they're due, August third through tenth?
August tenth is the final day that they're due, but, but that's noon. Make sure you underline it at noon on the tenth. So, so, uh, but August third to tenth is the registration week and that's, that's when, uh, you are.
Pick up your.
Don't wait till the tenth. Don't make me have to call you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second?
He was waiting for a second.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.